Minute, but thumbs up for Jonathan.
Okay.
All right, it's seven.
Alrighty, good evening and welcome to the Town of Stowe Select Board Meeting for July twenty six, twenty twenty two. Um, in the room tonight, we have um Ms. Heidman, Ms. Fresha, myself, Ms. Bertrand McMichael. Um, and remote tonight, we have Ms. Sturgis. Um, I want to remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. Um, and that we will use the hands up um function for um comment during public comment. Um, before we start the meeting, um, I wanna address a couple of things. Um, and that is that recently, um, I have.
I have become aware of a false narrative that has been um created without any factual backup as to why the Boards and Committee Code of Conduct um item has been put back on the agenda. I wanna be clear that I put it back on the agenda. I put it back on the agenda because a board member requested that I put it back on the agenda after our last meeting. Um, I consulted with the town administrator to make sure that we didn't already have a very full meeting. It went on the agenda. It was a process that we discussed last year as a board, um, and that's the the process that we've been following. Um, and then this past, uh, a couple of days ago, Courtney sent a markup to me. Um, I deemed that it was too late to have a markup of um a document that we would be discussing. Excuse me, um, I wanted it to be equitably fair for the board to be able to have that discussion, um, and I feel like I've met that right now. Um, so I'm removing that from the agenda tonight. I'm sorry if anybody is on here to listen to that discussion, but we will not be talking about it. Um, it's been suggested uh in some of the emails that I've received that not every member of every board be painted with the same wide brush stroke as some of the members of some boards and committees have been misbehaving. Um, and I hear that comment. Uh, the hope was that a blanket policy was going to allow for self-correction for board members that were misbehaving. Um, but in absence of that policy, we as a select board still have the tools of executive session and public censure and other tools that are at our disposal. Um, and I just wanna say that uncivil behavior to staff members or other board members elected or appointed will not be tolerated. Um, and with that, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Uh, the other thing I need to mention with public comment is it is only for items that are on the that are not on the agenda tonight. Um, and the other thing is I will not allow for disparaging comments um about people who are in this room or who are not in this room to happen. Um, if you have something that you would like to say, um, that is again, not on the agenda tonight and you feel like it needs to be addressed, I will happily hear that. Um, I would also like to remind people that our email addresses are on the website. Um, also the select board email, the town administrator, everyone is open to hearing feedback. Um, we do not legislate this board through Facebook or other forms of social media. Um, it's a tool that's not equitable to this board as we don't all have access to that. And so we can't have a discussion about something that we don't all see. And so I would request that if people have issues, that they would contact this board directly through the select board email, through the town administrator email, through my email, which is on the website. Um, so those are the things that I just um wanted to take the time as the chair of the board to say tonight, given some of the things that uh have come to my attention of late. Um, and with that, if anyone has public comment? We have Linda Hathaway.
Kayla, our town clerk.
Hi, I just uh wanted to remind everybody that the state has sent out the um vote by mail applications. You should have all received them. We've started receiving them in. Um, but a lot of people have forgotten that if they're not enrolled in a party, they're independent and they want to vote in a primary, they need to tell us whether they want a Democratic ballot or a Republican ballot. Because I'm really good at guessing things, but I don't know that. So if you wanna vote in your no party unenrolled or you're Libertarian or Green Rainbow, you would have to tell us to send either a Democrat or Republican ballot. If you don't send it, we're not gonna give you one. So anyway, we look forward for more of these. And we will be having early voting starting August um twenty seventh for the week prior. So people can vote in person and not only by if they don't wanna vote by mail. So I'll see you guys later.
Thanks, Linda. Yes? All right, uh, does you have anything that you would like to say? No, Ms. Fresha?
Nope.
Okay, Ms. Sturgis, any comments? No? Okay, fantastic. Um, all right, we're gonna move on to the town administrators' report. Ms. Dumbkowsky?
Just a few quick things. Um, as of July twenty first, which was last Thursday, we had eighteen positive COVID cases in town or a six point seven four percent positivity rate. Um, Saturday, July sixteenth, the lieutenant governor, acting as the governor, signed an extension to the open meeting law, remote meeting legislation. The existing provisions will allow for a fully remote meeting um to be extended through March thirty first, twenty twenty three, at which time they hope to have something more permanent in place. Uh, after a visual inspection this morning at the lake, uh, the Nishova Associated Board of Health conducted an inspection at the town beach and observed um concerns for water quality. Observations of a dark green scum present and therefore the beach has been closed for swimming until further notice. Uh, the message is on our Facebook page, on our website. Um, the Lake Boone Association has posted it, so please keep an eye out, but it will be closed until the beach is safe to reopen. Um, and then just lastly, just because I know there have been a lot of questions, um speculation about the Bose campus and the Masters Academy. Um, I can tell you that everything that people are hearing rumors, it's all speculation. Um, I am in contact with Bose, I am in contact with Peter Masters. I I still don't know what's going in there. I can't confirm anything, I can't deny anything, because quite frankly, I don't know. It's all still in process. Um, I've been told that hopefully we'll have more information in a couple of weeks, but I was told that a couple of weeks ago. So as of right now, I I do not know what's taking place there or what's the future of that site. So when we hear something, I will certainly pass it along, but as of today, everything about that is speculation. So I just wanted to put that out there officially. And that's it.
Thank you. Um, with that, we have two appointments tonight. We have the appointment of a call firefighter EMT and a full-time firefighter EMT. And Denise, did you wanna?
Just that I support both of these, um, they both completely recommended, there was a process to fill both positions. Um, both of the candidates uh were the top choice and I'm excited to get them both formally appointed into their roles.
Okay.
Captain this year.
Captain, Captain Edwards, would you like to speak? Um, how about we speak on um Jonathan Foster first?
Uh, so Jonathan Foster is uh he's a gentleman applied for our uh per diem shifts at the fire department. He comes in with a lot of fire and EMS background, he's worked at several fire departments, he's had to move around because of his full-time job. Um, but he's really excited to be on our part-time staff. Um, I've had the pleasure of speaking with him on several occasions for at length. He's really excited and uh we're we're really happy to have him. And uh we we've already started, uh, we hit the ground running already, we're starting to train him up and 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 get ready to work our next shifts.
Excellent.
We're we're in need of it and we're really excited to have somebody like him.
Thank you. Um, is he in this room?
No, he's not.
No, okay. There's a lot of faces I don't know. Um, oh, okay.
Looks like this.
Jonathan, are you, would would you like to just say a couple of words?
Hi, good evening, this is Jonathan, how are you?
How are you?
I just vouched one.
Um, do you wanna just tell us a little tiny bit about yourself before we, you just did. Yeah, that's it.
Can you can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Yeah, yes, so uh, so my background uh with fire started in about two thousand and three. I became a member of the Call Fire Department of the town of Ashland. I stayed with Ashland for a number of years, moved to Connecticut. I was on a department in Connecticut for a number of years until I decided to move back to Massachusetts. And I've just recently completed and graduated from paramedic school within the past year. So I'm hoping to bring that experience to this town. Um, I've been very impressed with every single person I've met with this department, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Excellent. Yeah, I I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Jonathan Foster in the position of Call Firefighter EMT through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
I'll second. And any discussion? Ellen, you good? No? Okay. Um, and with that, all in favor? All right, so, uh, Ms. Sturgis? I I see you, yeah. Ms. Heidman? But we have to do a roll call, sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Fresha, all right, and Chair votes aye, and so that is unanimous. Sorry, well, we have the.
Got it.
Somebody remote.
Still trying to get to. All right, and would you like?
And I just wanna comment.
Yes.
Ellen motioned that she can't talk, so just in case she just waves or raises her hand.
Oh, perfect, that's great, yep, got it, we got you. Um, if there's anything she wants to say, can she just put it in the chat?
I I was, if she makes nose, I can turn on.
You can hear us, yeah, okay, good. Um, okay. Um, all right, so tell us about Matthew McNulty.
So Matt was uh one of my recruits in uh the recruit class back in two thousand and seventeen. Um, graduated from that, um, he then he became a very active member in the Call Fire Department. He would, he trained, we got him trained up to working uh night shifts as per diem. Very active with the per diems, he's a very valuable member, you know, for a tour organization, just in that respect. Two weeks ago, uh, Matt was also appointed the uh EMS coordinator for the fire department, it's kind of a big responsibility. Um, he's already been an asset for that. And all that with just his great attitude and work ethic, work ethic. I just think he's gonna be a great member to a full-time staff.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
Um, I mean, I haven't pretty much summed it up right there, but just I'm incredibly grateful that you guys have given us opportunity.
Well, thank you so much for joining our. Thank you. All right, are we ready to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Matthew McNulty to the position of full-time firefighter EMT through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that. And any further discussion? No? All right, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Aye? Ms. Heidman?
Did you not hear me?
Yeah, no, we got you, we got you that time, yep. Uh, Ms. Fresha?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, all right, congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Both of you.
Yes. You can clap, it's okay. Sometimes the families like to take pictures with.
We got a badge thing and everything.
You got, bring it in.
Yeah, do it, let's do it.
We'll do your, we'll, I, here. Mom, you wanna give me the camera?
This was Matt's grandfather, Matt's grandfather was a police officer.
Oh, very nice to meet you, thank you for coming. Yeah.
Let's see. Hope I never see you again.
You can come into into this meeting.
Yes, just for good social things.
Maybe for promotion.
Yeah, right, right, yes.
All right. Thank you all so much, all right, so we have.
You're all welcome.
You're all welcome. Congratulations to you all, thank you. All right. Let's, ooh, state primary and special town election warrants, alrighty. Uh, is Linda on? Are we tapping?
Uh, she's, I just, um.
I don't know.
Yeah, I just posted it on mute, but I I mean, I think it's.
Who wants to take the lead on this? Yeah?
Linda, come.
What, what would you like?
I would just like you to kick off what we're talking about.
Oh, sure, it's a requirement that the select board sign the warrants um for the election. And so I provided you with the copies that tell you the precincts where they're gonna be located, the time and the date and the offices that are to be elected. And then, um, you sign it, we get the constable to post it, and that meets the requirements.
Okay. Okay? Sounds very, um, okay, so.
May I, before you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, um, so you'll see for this one, we're asking for the board to approve the warrants. And then just for the September primary, to assign the number of police officers. Um, I have a memo, which is the next item you'll be discussing, uh, that the section seventy-two of the Act of twenty twenty-two is changing the statute from having the police chief decide how many detail officers to the select board. Why that is, none of us know, but um, so what most towns are doing is having the select board re-delegate authority to the chief of police in collaboration with the town clerk to decide the safe number of detail officers. So for this first one, we'll have you take the recommendation of the chief and the town clerk for the September primary. But then I think going forward, if you're comfortable delegating the authority back to the chief, quite frankly, it makes the most sense.
Sure. Um, all right, uh, well, if it is. Let's do the motion to approve the warrants and then we'll do the. Wait, how, we have the, I'm sorry, we have the three motions in a row. I know, but. Is one of the motions is that we have to assign a certain number? Do you wanna give us that number? It's just blank right now.
Yes, it said, um, I think it's one, it's one.
Yeah.
Oh, it's one?
Right now, it's just one.
Okay.
For for that.
Okay. All right, that all makes sense then, so I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the state primary and state town election warrants as presented at this meeting.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Uh, right, all in favor, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Ms. Heidman?
Aye.
Ms. Sasha?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that is unanimous. Let's take another motion.
I move to assign one police officer for the September sixth, twenty twenty-two election.
Second that. Any discussion? No? All in favor, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Heidman?
Aye.
Ms. Fresha?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, that is unanimous, and I will take another motion.
Okay, this time, I move to delegate authority given to the select board in chapter ninety-two, section seventy-two of the Act of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. To detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains polling places or for one or more precincts at every election therein to preserve our order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from interference with their duties and to even enforcing the laws related into elections to the chief of police.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor, Ms. Sturgis?
I am negative.
Ms. Sturgis? Aye?
Aye.
I gotcha, um, Ms. Heidman?
Aye.
Ms. Fresha?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, okay. All right, and now we have.
I just, I, can I make a comment that it's funny, it's funny that the chief isn't here, like the first meeting, we haven't seen him at and we just gave him more work, so.
No, no, he's sitting in the back of the room.
I'm right here.
He's here.
Oh, is he there?
Oh, there he is, he's here, yeah.
All right, yeah, I'm here.
Um, in fact, he is now going to speak with us about his.
Are we on, uh, the policy minutes? Okay.
Oh, no, sorry, yes, no, no, it is, your policy is next, yes. And then we'll get to you right on. Okay, so, cheers, Lucy.
So I am back again for another policy. This is continuing on with uh the keep of reviewing all of our policies as well as putting um us in compliance with our post-regulations. So one of the uh regulations or the CMRs they put out was changing our handling of juvenile policy. So this actually, our policy was originally put in place uh years ago and this update will take care of all some of the new changes. Uh, we try to handle our juveniles uh with more of a discretionary outcome than a hard juvenile law enforcement outcome. So we have a lot of diversion programs, but it also addresses like, okay, the minimum age for a criminal offense used to be seven years old. They moved it up to twelve years old. Uh, then moved like what can, you know, the police officers can arrest for certain crimes under six months of punishment. So we list those out. Um, it also talks about differences, how differences have changed between uh a chins and they've gotten rid of chins warrants, which all needed services, and now it's child requiring assistance. So these go through, and I know there was a lot, there was like twenty-something pages in the packet, so. Um, but we updated everything that's accordance with the the post-regulations and what we need to be doing as a police department. Uh, it also goes through the officers and tells them, okay, you know, we do diversion, we do restorative justice, we do uh, uh, you use our jail diversion clinician, we have mental health clinician now. Uh, so we, everything that we can use for juveniles, uh, we have in here too. It also talks a little bit, we don't have school resource officers, the school doesn't pay for those. Uh, but we do have officers specially trained as school resource officers, I still get them the same, the same certification if we actually have them inside of the schools, just so we can have an additional training for all of our officers. So um, that's where we're at with this, and I ask that you guys adopt this new policy. If you have any questions, please let me know though.
No close.
I don't have any questions.
Question not related to the policy changes.
Okay.
Uh, just as education, you said you have a mental health officer or a mental health resource.
So what we did was we, I was able to um secure a grant through the Department of Mental Health for a jail diversion clinician. Uh, and what they are trained in is mental health and substance abuse, and it's a master level licensed social worker. And we coordinated with the town of Harvard, so we will have that person twenty-four hours a week and they'll have that person sixteen hours a week. We actually just offered a position to a a person that we're doing the background check on and our goal is they're gonna start their field training with advocates, because they're associated with advocates and they'll be actually in our station uh full-time, hopefully starting like the first week of September.
Wow.
And they go.
You prepared a grant application for this?
So uh, we're working with advocates, yes, and it did, um, and they helped me put it all together and everything. Um, yeah, it was a hundred thousand dollar grant that we get uh for the next four years. It covers their uh salary and they'll be inside the cruiser with uh responding actually with the officers. Uh, the, we have a coverage person right now, so there's like one day a week. Uh, we've used them along with our advocates, that's like emergency services. Uh, and they've responded, uh, I would say maybe one to two times, they've been coming up since we started this program a week, like on top of their coverage time. And then also being with us full-time, they can do follow-up too. They can actually uh reach out and give resources to families and to follow up with the follow-up work.
Well, thank you very much for doing that. I was wondering if the town is aware of that. I mean, this is somewhat new or? I think we, you came before us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I started this before I became chief and it just took us like a, it took us quite a while to finally secure uh, get the grant. And then once we even got that, it was uh, it was hard to find the right fit, you know, a person. Um, and working with hours and days of the week, like we originally said, okay, from eleven AM to seven PM would be great because it covers a couple of shifts, uh, Tuesday through Saturday, and that really pushed people away like, and so like, well, let's adjust it to Monday to Friday or, and, you know, maybe make the hours, tweak the hours. And we found someone who's, is a clinician and she's leaving her practice to do this and this is like something that she wants to work in small-town atmosphere, um, with the local PDs. And this is, the point of the program is to keep people in, one, um, to divert them from being arrested if we can and also to keep them out of the hospital. So it lowers the cost of healthcare and it also lowers uh the cost of our criminal justice system. So that's really, that's one of the main points of this program. And also to give people help too, and different resources, because you can't rush your way out of every problem, right? So we have to have alternatives and this is one of them that we can use. And it's helped, uh, we've dealt with juveniles and we've dealt with adults. And throughout this, uh, since we've been having our partnership with advocates and it's uh really good feedback from the officers. Uh, it's a great resource that we that we have and uh I'm real lucky and really proud of this program too, so.
That's great, you should be.
Clearly, it's not just a monetary cost that you're lowering, you're lowering costs to human beings that are, you know, through through compassionate treatment.
Yep.
Speaking great. Right, I will take a motion. For that, no, it's great, I mean, that's a great.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the updated Police Department Policy one point one five, Handling Juveniles, as presented at this meeting.
All right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, uh, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
All in favor, aye? Um, Ms. Heidman?
Aye.
Ms. Fresha?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, that's unanimous, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, all right. This next one's super exciting for anyone who likes coffee in this town. We have an applicant. Hold on a minute, I'm scrolling through the entire policy of to get to the, I'm sorry, Denise, do you have this up? Forty-seven pages.
Yes, I don't have the agenda.
Okay, hold on, no, 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 I got it, I got it, I got it. All right. So Mr. Hill, you are here
Yes.
to ask for a common vic license to, for a mug and muffin um at the old location of the Dunkin' Donuts, the girl's station.
Yes.
Um, so Denise, did you wanna speak on that first or?
Uh, just that we reviewed the application, um, there were no issues with the court check, the Board of Health issued a food permit, the departments had no concerns. Um, so I think it's great, I look forward to having a new coffee place in town and respectfully ask for your support of the recommendation.
Excellent. So Mr. Hill, would you like to tell us a little bit about the mug and muffin?
Well, we just made it up.
That's a great name.
Sounds good to me. Like that condolence is a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're hoping to offer a similar offering that they did, we hope to do it better, faster, less expensive, I hope.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, I think Dunkin' was there for twenty years, I think um the non-drive-through for a lot of coffee shops is a problem for the big franchises. And so they decided they couldn't do it anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's been successful there for twenty years, we think it's gonna go hopefully somewhere back to normal eventually.
Mm-hmm.
And um, we just decided that we should do it on our own. Because other franchises have the same issue. Uh, we talked to almost all of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But we think we can make a go of it. So we have a lot of work to do to get our customers back. They were not treated very well towards the end. Uh, as you know, any company will do of those last legs, if they've got the staff it right.
Right, right.
And so many customers that I've seen for twenty years are gone. But hopefully we'll come back.
But you're on their their route of travel. I ran a coffee shop once and.
As did I, yes.
Buy coffee where they are, so if they're gonna go buy, they're gonna wanna.
Yeah, we have a nice corner.
Yeah.
So we hope if we get them in it out quick and.
Yeah.
Do it right, they'll come back.
Absolutely. But we're excited that you're, you're taking a, taking a chance on our town, that's great. Um, Ms. Sturgis, you have your hand up.
Yeah, and I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't hear really well, but, so did you own the Dunkin' Donuts franchise or was before Dunkin' Donuts? I I couldn't.
Oh, I own the, I own the uh, the business at the gas station, not the private.
Oh, you own the gas sta, oh, got it.
The gas station, but the convenience store business.
Yeah.
And um, we've had two different Dunkin' franchises over the twenty years. Um, and the second one, uh, couldn't make a go of it at the end. I don't know if it was due to health or volume, I think it was a combination of both.
Mm-hmm, great.
That's what happened.
Yeah, great, sorry, I didn't, I just didn't cancel that, thank you. Well, I'm I'm thrilled and, you know, if you, if you carry, other than Dunkin' Donuts coffee, I'd be even happier, so. I can, I can offer suggestions as the coffee addict, so.
You're gonna love Mug and Muffin breakfast plan.
Excellent, I love it.
You know.
That's excellent. All right, well, let's, let's get this motion on the road.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
So when do you anticipate opening?
I hope Monday.
August first?
Yes.
Excellent.
Oh.
All right, well, let's get this.
I will say, I've heard a lot of people struggling without any coffee shops in town to stop to on a Monday morning.
Yes.
Because the the few we have are not open Monday morning.
Yes.
And all the plazas just close, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so, all right, we're excited, thank you so much.
Brace yourself, you might be.
I know, seriously.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
Since you're here, what other products will you offer aside from coffee? Obviously muffins, but.
We'll do, uh, you know, we'll do the donuts and muffins, uh, probably do sandwiches a week or two out, once we get our legs underneath us. Um, but I hope that eventually we'll do kind of a high, high-quality afternoon sandwich, I hope, chicken sandwich.
Yeah.
Uh, and I had a nice one at Mam's, I love that one, I wanna call you that one. So we just hope to be able to do what people want us to do, I think.
Yeah.
Where the big franchises do what they wanna do.
Mm-hmm.
So I hope that we'll be a little bit more flexible and uh listen to what people want, try to meet their needs.
That's great, and six AM to two PM are the hours?
Probably five AM to ultimately six, but probably, uh, we need help to get there. So probably from five to two initially, but eventually we wanna be able to go six.
So when you do plan to change your hours, just let us know so we can make a note. They don't need to vote your hours, but we have it in the file uh with the license, so we would just need to make a note of that.
Excellent.
And we'll make a, and we could also make a couple of comments. People, people that are watching this, we're having a meeting, we'll get that information. People, people that are watching this, we're already meeting, we'll get that information.
Please come.
All right, with that, I'm gonna take a motion.
I move to approve and sign a common bitch with their license for Stover Gulf DVA mug and muffin located at six twenty-sixth Great Road in Stowe.
I will second that, and I have.
Yeah, at, any discussion, Ms. Heggman?
Yes. I'm hoping, although I cannot mandate this, that you will not use styrofoam.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, just, I know it's cheaper, but it also sits in the environment for more than seven generations, but I cannot mandate it.
The whole issue, but.
Yeah.
I know that, although the cup pricing has gone crazy.
So I can only ask you to consider. Just from an environmental perspective.
Yes.
But now, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion?
I'll just say, on that note, if you offer five cent discounts on the coffee, if you bring your own cup in, it encourages people. It's amazing how simple that is. So. Because I'll second the idea. Yeah.
Um, all right, all in favor, Ms. Durgis?
Aye.
It's fresh up, and Chair votes aye. So that's unanimous. Welcome to town. Thank you so much. You obviously have been welcome to town. Welcome mug and muffin to town.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I will have the board sign the license, and I'll drop it off to you this week, so you have the license.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
If you need anything, let me know.
Thanks so much. It's nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
All righty, uh, next up, we are going to hear from our Green Advisory Committee.
May I ask a new question?
Absolutely.
Arnie, you're gonna run your PowerPoint, did you want me to? What's easier for you?
I can, well, if you can, if you can put it up, if you can share a screen, and I'll just let you know when to advance the slides.
I can certainly do that.
Yeah, great.
Right, so we're having, um, Arnie Epstein and Sharon's on as well?
Yep, Sharon's on.
Okay.
Frank, our building.
Frank, our building, okay, fantastic. So the Green Advisory Committee is gonna be presenting us this policy tonight. I don't have a vote scheduled for it, because I did want to make sure that we had buy-in from capital planning. And also from the Finance Committee, just because I don't, I didn't wanna schedule a vote on something that was going to have financial implications until we have buy-in from them. This has nothing to do with whether or not I support the policy, but, but it's just a matter of wanting to make sure we had buy-in from them as well. So, Arnie, with that, I'm gonna let you kick it off.
Let me just.
Note screen. And thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Arnie's joining us from Canada.
Yeah, I am joining you from Quebec. So. Uh, yeah, this, we're, uh, the Stowe Green Advisory Committee, I'm the Chair of the Stowe Green Advisory Committee. And we're here tonight to propose a policy on the use of fossil fuels. And new and renovated municipal buildings. And the proposed policy would be one where new municipal buildings would not employ fossil fuels for heating or hot water. With certain exceptions, and we'd also, the policy would also include major renovations. Or the replacement of the existing HVAC system in a municipal building. Uh, that, that fossil fuels used would be reduced to the extent possible. Next slide, please. So why are we asking that the Select Board adopt such a policy? The Select Board established the Stowe Green Advisory Committee almost a year ago. And one of our primary charters was to align the town with the state's new climate law. Uh, which requires the state to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by half by twenty thirty. And achieve what's called zero by twenty fifty. And the Green Advisory Committee believes that this policy, if adopted. Would help achieve that goal. Buildings statewide represent. Uh, a large fraction of the state's overall greenhouse gas emissions. And in Stowe, the fraction is even larger, almost fifty percent of town-wide greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, next slide, please. So we believe that the town should lead by example. We believe the town should set the tone for the, the, the rest of residents. And commercial entities in town. We're entering a phase of growth in our residential housing. We're going to be encouraging homeowners to consider switching to electric heat pumps. The next time they need to replace their heating system. And so we feel that having the town adopting a policy that the, that the residents. And, and commercial entities in town can look to would help us achieve that goal. Uh, and for buildings as a whole, and municipal buildings in particular. Uh, the right time to eliminate the use of fossil fuels is at the time the building is built. Uh, once the building is built, that the HVAC system, if it does use fossil fuels. Will not be replaced for fifteen or more years. That will impact the operational cost of the, of the building, as we'll see. Uh, and it will just, what we call the whole deeper, the town. Where we will ultimately need to have most of the buildings in the state. Be all-electric by, certainly by twenty fifty to meet. Target. Uh, next slide, please. So what are the benefits of the Select Board adopting a policy? This, we've already seen that fossil fuel buildings, and we have some backup information on that, are the right environmental decision. Given the large impact that buildings have today on the envi-, on the greenhouse gas footprint for the town of Stowe. The construction costs for an all-electric building compared to one running with fossil fuels are similar. And as the state introduces more stringent energy codes. As will be the case, starting next year with the update to the stretch energy code, it will become even more. Uh, appropriate to use all-electric heat pumps for heating and cooling. Uh, in addition to comparable construction costs, there are significant grants available. Uh, we have as a town already received almost four hundred thousand dollars in grants for retrofitting existing municipal buildings. To, to heat pumps, in addition to the Green Community Grants. The Hudson Light and Power, our utility, has doubled their available grants to municipalities. On an annual basis for incorporating heat pumps in their municipal buildings. Uh, and finally, but importantly, because we enjoy such low electric rates, one of the lowest in the state. Uh, using electric heat pumps for heating is a much more economical way to operate the building. Uh, than any other means of, of heating, particularly any of the fossil fuels, that's including natural gas. And it avoids, as you're all aware, the volatility that we've been seeing in fossil fuel prices recently. Uh, next slide. So here, uh, on this slide is the suggested wording that the Stowe Green Advisory Committee has come up with. For a policy for the Select Board to adopt, or at least to consider. Um, it really is a, a policy that pretty much goes over the items that I've discussed earlier. Uh, we've reviewed the policy with our Building Commissioner, who I believe is. Uh, on the call also tonight, and incorporated some of the exceptions that he has suggested. Uh, in, in the proposed policy. Uh, so at this point. I do have some additional slides with some more details on some of the items that I mentioned during the presentation. We could, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them, or go to some of that additional information. So if, uh, at the, so at this point, I'd be happy to answer questions on any of those areas. Uh, or anything else that you might have. And since there won't be a vote tonight. And we weren't the, really, we're not anticipating that there would be. Uh, we would be happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have on this policy. Um, I'd just like to add, finally, that Stowe would be joining a number of other communities who have already adopted. Uh, similar policies, uh, so we wouldn't be breaking new ground, but I think as a. As a small town, we would be, you know, one of the, one of the leaders in adopting such a policy for our municipal buildings. So with that, I'm pretty much completed my presentation and happy to take questions or go over any additional information.
Um, I would just like to say thank you all for putting this together. I think when we put the Green Advisory Committee together. We hoped to be able to, to get policy like this from you all, and so I appreciate all of the work that you have done on that. Um, does anyone from the board have any questions for anyone, for Arnie on the policy end of it?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think it's, I agree, and thank you very much for going through this. And I know that Acton and several other communities, Boston, Cambridge. What was that, that they just got a state law allowing them to ban the use of gasoline in any new buildings? Okay, so there's, there's a number of communities that just worked on that, and I, I was just looking on my phone to see if I could pull it up quickly, but it's, I can't. But I think it would be wonderful. I love the idea that Stowe would be a leading community. So I would endorse it. I do look forward to the other boards' input on it, so, um, thank you very much.
Excellent. Ellen?
Yeah, I, um, I heard the building, I can't see, but the building inspector's there, and I'm just wondering his thoughts. And particularly, I guess, since we're looking at the library project that, that clearly would be impacted, presumably we pass this in the next month or so. Is that, is that a correct assumption? And then I'd love to hear what the building inspector thinks about it.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have this come back for a vote, once we get some input from, um, from capital planning. And from Finance Committee as well, but yes, I would like to, it will go back on an agenda soon, but yes, is, um, is he here? So Frank is on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Frank.
Hi.
Um, all right, uh, would you, well, Ellen, did you have a specific?
Oh, I, yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, I mean, I know when it first came up, like, there was the issue with the generator, and, but it seems like Arnie's group has addressed that. Um, I'm just wondering, um, if Frank, if you had any other concerns in terms of basically the operations of this. In terms of, you know, what would the implementation would look like, and, and, um, just to be realistic about, you know. What the impact might be short-term, honestly. I mean, I think it's a good long-term plan, and I just, just would like to hear from the people who are most impacted, what, what that would be.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, you're talking new buildings, so, um. You know, you, you, to just plan in the construction phase for, for electric heat as opposed to anything else. You know, and if that's the way the town chooses to go, that's, that's fine. I don't think it's, um, you know, it's all gonna happen at the design phase, really.
Well, it does, it's major renovations, so maybe I'm wrong, maybe it doesn't include the library, but I would assume there's just the same way other things.
It does include the library, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, major renovations, yeah, I mean, you, you're talking, you, you know, substantial work, where you're doing, you, you're looking at those systems anyway. So. I, I think, you, you know, you, you're gonna cross a bridge some point, where you look at a building, and we'd like to make it all-electric, and. You know, what does that mean? And, and you, you do the analysis then, and do the best you can, I suppose, you know. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, um, Arnie, since you mentioned your additional information, I, I'm, can you talk a little bit more about grants? Are you already in the process of applying, or is that something we do after we approve it?
Well, it, that, the grants are applied for, for, you know, for particular projects. So we had the, the town building, the police station, the highway department office building. Uh, we had planned to apply for a Green Communities Grant. Uh, if we had gone forward with the town hall renovation, that was part of the design for that, for that project as well. Um, but that would be on a, on a project-by-project basis.
Okay.
And this number that we've got here, that three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars is the total that we've received. From Green Communities to date for those specific projects.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I found the reference I was looking for.
Okay.
Called an act driving clean energy and offshore wind, and Arnie, I don't know if you've seen that or looked it over, but, um, it approved a ban on new fossil fuel connections. To ten municipalities in the Commonwealth, and Acton was one of them, and Cambridge and Boston. There was some concern about, as you move forward on this, to the extent that affordable housing. If this policy ever gets to that level, we, there may need to be a clause to ensure that affordable housing. But isn't becoming exclusionary practice because of costs, but ideally, these methods are less expensive. And would be the sought-after form of heating. So I found it, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you for that.
That's actually, that reminds, I mean, we have SMT, the Red Acre Project coming up, which will be new construction, and I assume that would be also, in fact, a great.
Right, and just to be clear, this proposed policy applies only to municipal buildings. Um, uh, we have been in discussions with the developers for the two major developments in Stowe. As well as with SMT for the Red Acre Roads development, and those discussions are all, I can say, charging. Particularly. The development on that acre road, I think, is, I think the thought is, is that the RFP would, uh, you know. Would indicate that the, those, those housing units would be all-electric. But this, just to be clear, this, this proposed policy again is, applies just to town municipal buildings. Not to residential or commercial buildings.
Um, Chair.
I'm ready for, oh, well, so, yeah, you can make a comment, sorry.
Everybody else has kinda had their. Black out a couple of times.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a member of SMT, I just, I've actually been advocating for some time for an exemplary project with. Um, the most energy-efficient homes possible, because I just, you know, we have an opportunity to build a little gem. And, and have it be an exciting project, so I'm all for that. In general, I'm all for this, for this policy. When the other boards have had a chance to weigh in, and that's all I had to say.
Um, Denise, could I ask you or the office to either send this presentation to capital? Like, how, what's the best way to ask for feedback and comment from them for their, for their next meeting, or do you want us to write a letter?
No, I mean, you could either invite them in, um, because I don't know of any finance, I don't believe finance was planning to meet again this summer.
Okay.
Capital planning, I don't believe, has any plans to meet.
Okay.
So you could either, um, we could send something out with the date of when you plan to discuss this again and have a vote, and ask them to have a meeting and discuss it. Or you can invite them here to have a discussion.
I think if we invite them here to have a discussion, I just wanna make sure they have ample time to go over it. Um, so, yeah, that would be my best way of doing it, for sure.
Yeah, so you would just have to.
Yeah.
Let me know when you want to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, all right. So since we're not taking a vote on it tonight, then, all right.
Do you want to have an idea when it will come back?
Um.
The Green Advisory Vote, or do you want to discuss that?
Let's discuss it later because I just, I want to make sure the other groups can weigh in. All right. Okay, um, is the person here for the ALS bike ride? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Arnie. Thank you, Arnie, very much.
Frank.
And thank you, Frank. Appreciate it. I just want to know if that question's here.
No.
Okay.
This is a fairly standard approval, so um you see the chief's.
Yeah, great.
Safety plan.
Fantastic. Um, I've seen a lot of people join us uh right now. Um, I don't know if you saw the beginning of the meeting, we have tabled the board and committees comment. So if that's why you're here, unless everyone's here to talk about the right to defeat ALS, which is the next one. And that's all I'll say on that. Um. I made a statement at the beginning of the meeting, so you can. Or reference that. Okay. Um.
So we, we are thinking about, um, we, this, we have this well in mind, there, there are, the, the board, well. I personally feel that there are issues that need to be addressed. Um, it's not clear to us what the policy is gonna look like yet. We're still looking at the content of the policy. Um, I feel that um. It, in some way, we need to make it incredibly clear that rudeness and maltreatment of staff or other people is absolutely out of the question. Is not condoned in our community. And so. It, it's gonna take a while to. To come up with exactly the policy and the procedures, but there are things in place. Um.
Yep.
Madam Chair made a fairly complete statement at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
Um.
So.
I just want to say, I personally, uh. I'm quite ready to. Make sure that, that uh inappropriate behavior is, is clearly not tolerated.
Uh, we're not taking any more comments. I'm sorry, um, I did make a fairly extensive statement at the beginning as my, as I'm the chair, correct the board.
Correct.
Um, I made the statement at the beginning of the meeting. I took it off of the agenda. It's not on the agenda. I don't even believe we can discuss this at this point because I've already removed it from the agenda. So we're gonna move on.
Curious.
We're gonna move on. Okay.
We're, it'll come up again. It's not on our minds.
It's just been removed. That's what we have available as the chair said, public center and executive session and what's there now, which is, I think we got a week, but any of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so we are going to move on to the twenty twenty-two Ride to Defeat ALS Bike Ride.
Thank you all for your concern.
Thank you.
For coming, really.
The Randall Library Building exterior design still on the agenda?
Yep.
I'm sorry, the last, the voting designate numbers is that on that?
That's on you still. I mean, it's a revote that the board has to take. I don't know why it's. But it's, it's just a vote that we have to take. It's not.
Correction.
It's a correction of a vote that we've already taken.
Stay.
Yeah, I mean, you can stay for it. This is literally the correction of a clerical error.
But we can explain.
Yep. Um, all right. So back to this permit for the twenty twenty-two Ride to Defeat ALS Bike Ride. Um, I, we have all the information on it. The person is not here. If you want to just take, all right, we'll take a motion if there's any questions about it. We can just move on. All right.
Uh, Madam Chair, with the approval of public safety officials, I move to approve the use of Stowe Public Ways for the twenty twenty-two. Ride to Defeat ALS Bike Ride on Sunday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Also, no problem. Um, all in favor, Ms. Sturgis? Ms. Heggman?
Aye.
Ms. Precia?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, that is unanimous. Okay, so as I said, we are revoting. Well, not revoting, we're just clearing up the clerical error if. All right.
Can I just make a word of explanation?
Yes, I, no, absolutely.
So, um, when we were reading over our minutes, we discovered, so we had two different committees that we were voting on the night that we made these votes originally. And we didn't specifically vote uh to, just what it says here on the agenda, to designate. The members of the exterior design committee as special municipal employees. So that's all we're doing tonight is clarifying that vote.
Can I ask a question? I'm not allowed to.
No, we're just gonna take the vote. I don't, I mean, it really is just a clerical error.
Yep.
So, okay, I will take a motion.
Well, I'm sorry, just, unless it's a clarification question.
Nope, that's fine. Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to designate the Randall Library Building Exterior Design Committee as special municipal employees pursuant to Mass General Law. Chapter two sixty-eight A. Members must agree to comply with state ethics and open meeting law requirements.
I'll say that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, um, all in favor, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Aye, Ms. Heggman?
Aye.
Ms. Precia?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, great. That is that. Great, meeting minutes. Does anyone have any notes or anything?
I thought they looked.
Good. I think they look clear.
Yay, Joyce. But they were great. Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the July twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting as drafted.
Uh, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Heggman?
Aye.
Ms. Precia?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that is that. And what do we have for correspondence? Any comments?
Is there anything you should cover?
I just, um, can I just ask that, when you said, you know, we've got the emails on the website, we hadn't been seeing all the emails that came to the select board email. So if we can make sure those get into the correspondence, that would be great.
Okay.
So we have the planning board's request for comments on the.
Oh, right.
Um. Uh, and that's, I think, I haven't had it, I have the, um. I happen to, because I'm a member of S M O T, have a hard copy of that at home that I just got today to look at. It's a comment.
Wait, did they want comments from, are they gonna come in and present anything to us?
No, they send.
I know they send it for everything.
Anytime I'm doing this, they ask if the board has any comments.
Okay.
Um, if you have specific comments, obviously the planning board will address most of them in their.
Right.
Meetings. Um, how, how public safety will weigh in.
Okay.
Um, conservation, the other departments, et cetera. But if you've got specific comments you wanted them to address, we could schedule it on the agenda.
Sure, absolutely.
So we could perhaps ask for that if we come up with something, ask for one.
Yeah.
Moment.
Yeah, absolutely. Alrighty. That.
I should do it.
All right. Madam Chair, I need to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, Ms. Sturgis?
Aye.
Heggman?
Aye.
Ms. Precia?
Aye.
All right, and have a good evening. Thank you.